Uh, welcome everybody to the Town of Acton Planning Board Meeting on Thursday, July seventeenth at two thousand twenty-one at six P M. We don't need an alternate. We have a new alternate. His name's Bernard Baroda.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to welcome him.
Thank you.
And I guess we'll start the public hearing on Kelly's Orchard.
You can do the minutes first.
Oh, yeah, it's on a little. Did everybody review their minutes?
Yep.
I did. I have a comment about them. And it's supposed to be twisted at the next Sleutman's meeting to something negative, but Ashley, I need to say that you did a great job with those minutes and are the best I've seen for a long time.
Good job.
Other than that, I'm making motions of approval.
A second. All in favor? All right, now we can start the public hearing on Kelly's Orchard Solar Array.
My name is Jenna. We all remember this is Dan. We were both in season of Orange Hairs. And we're representing the two and three-quarter megawatt DC power originally with Acton Solar and L C. This project will be on the Kelly property, the Kelly property property. I'm kind of getting over here again because it's going to be a public here. I'm going through again, so if it gets into a, it kind of is.
They'll pull that microphone a little closer. They don't speak as loud as I do.
Thank you.
Is that on, Virginia?
Yes, I can hear. Okay, awesome.
Goodness, we have a movie tonight. Nice.
So like we saw last week, the existing site on Kelly property, to the west is a lot of our fruit and apple trees, and to the south, to the east, there are forested areas and forested wetlands. Currently, our access is this property off of Sand Page Road where we all met. His wife accesses his dentist for dentistry off of Route two oh nine and our proposed access off the other side of Sand Page Road, once again. We'll have that access road off of Sand Page Road will be fifteen-foot wide access road that transitions into a twelve-foot wide turnaround. The utilities coming into the site will only be electrical. There won't be any sewer or water. There's no buildings proposed on site. And we'll have about six utility pools coming in that bring in some overhead lines and which will transfer into some underground conduit which connects to our concrete pad and the equipment on the pad. On that pad will be transverter, auxloader, and switchboard, which are all enclosed pieces of equipment that will be locked, even double locked on that pad.
How big did you say the turnaround was?
The turnaround? Yeah, yeah, shown on that plan.
How big was it? Did you, did you say how big it was?
So it's a fifteen-foot wide road which turns into a twelve-foot wide, a smaller, skinnier road at the turnaround. Just so any, any maintenance folks or anybody mowing can get in there and turn around and park off to the side because we don't have any parking on the side.
My, if I may, Mrs. Chairman, my only concern is, and it shouldn't happen, but the public safety equipment getting in there and turning around, that it obviously would take a bigger area to turn something like that around at the end of the road.
During construction, we do have extra gravel proposed for our construction vehicles. But all of that extra gravel will be removed. On the, on the plan, it's shown as like a light hatching. It might not even come up because it's not in the color, but the brown is the.
I guess my question would be, does, does this have to be approved by the fire chief?
Generally, they'll come out and do electrical inspections prior to the solars being operational, the solar panels.
But as far as their, other projects that we've done and helped me out, there you go.
Our traffic access?
Usually the fire chief goes in and says, I could be to turn my equipment around at the end of the.
Right, to get in and out.
Okay.
My assumption is that the trucks would be able, would have no problem accessing any of the equipment that, that they would need to in case of an emergency, just being able to pull their truck all the way in and then getting out could be something that they might need to look at just as far as turnaround. Is that something you guys have encountered in other communities?
No. We don't usually design internal fire truck access for a grid like this, especially with such a short length to get in. Typically, we just have our entryway, which is fifteen or twelve feet wide, only for vehicles that are maintenance vehicles. Fire, fire truck access in a grid like this is not important because these things are usually catch fire. There's not a lot of exposed vehicles or startups. So we haven't gone across and even do a turnaround for a fire truck in a grid like this. For this, in this instance, like Sarah, like Sarah mentioned, there is access either with gravel. They would have to back their way out based on what our house is on now, the San Pedro. But the entryway on the San Pedro will be its size for a fire truck.
I'm all set.
And the tree clearing out there, we'll be clearing about ten acres of area like the past couple times we've been here. And we'll be leaving some trees as stumps for solar setbacks, but inside of the farm fence will be leaving, we're removing all the stumps and swimming under the area.
Can we close that door?
And we're sitting here in the middle mix. And that farm fence is going to be seven feet tall. We recently added that six inches at the bottom of the fence line for wildlife passage, at the bottom of the fence. I think it's actually all included in the packet from North Star and all of our responses based on the past couple of meetings that we've had. Now I'll jump to the.
Are you tree, are you, you clearing trees from another ten acres or just what's been cut already? You're just getting rid of the stumps?
Um, ten acres is the amount of forested area that will be clearing. It doesn't include the, the fruit trees or the.
Light green.
And so the, the dark green hatching, if I can get this to show, the dark green hatching is going to be stumps remaining for solar setbacks and for shading and to get proper capacity towards the solar array. And the, the light green hatching will be the New England Meadow area, all inside of that seven-foot farm fence. And so our entrance road coming in off of San Page Road, you can see the turnaround in there, and you can kind of see the, the extra larger turnaround is on temporary gravel that I was explaining would be only for construction for larger, larger vehicles to get.
Were you cutting the trees?
The, the tree line is, is up against the existing area on the.
This doc's idea.
My point here.
Sure, go ahead.
It might be easier.
Yeah, yeah. And I think sidewalk was helpful, but I, I realized you didn't.
I couldn't make it.
Yeah. So the, the existing tree line basically falls in along this road and comes out, almost, yeah, parallel this road. It comes out and then dives back in all the way down to San Page Road. So the tree cutting outside of the orchard is going to basically occur from here over back straight up to San Page Road. So this, this area is going to be clearing of forested areas.
Not the dark green.
Dark green is where we're clearing but leaving some stumps. So that's what that indicates.
Is some of that in wetland?
It is. This little pocket here.
The hatchery.
Is in the wetland there. Yep. But what we've done with, been working with Art during the, the laying out of this raise, we wanted to protect as much of the orchard as we could to, to make sure he had a viable business. We wanted to protect the wetlands over in the east, so we had to squeeze this thing in. You see, that's the really, the reason for sort of narrow makeup of the array. We squeezed it into that forested area where there wasn't a lot of wetlands. And we saved him a lot of his better crops out there as well.
So do you, did, do you have a permit? Or need a permit from D E P?
We do, yeah. We've submitted, we've submitted a tier one permit and we've started reviewing that. Yeah.
Well, I'm fine with it. I just.
Yeah.
I know some of that was wasted.
Tough to tell.
I'm sorry. I, I, just as easy as I ask questions as we go, I think.
Oh, yeah, no worries. No worries. Picking some of the packet to all these sides.
Six thousand four hundred forty square feet.
Proposed.
Five thousand two hundred eighty.
Square feet have been.
So we will be leaving a fifteen-foot wide natural buffer on the facing San Page Road. She's going to try to barge it with this at the same time. But, um, yeah, so we will be leaving a fifty-foot wide buffer, which we looked at the sidewalk last week. And there is, there are existing trees along San Page Road across from the post office. But we will be clearing in that area to provide some space for the overhead utility lines and the utility poles that are going there. And we will be supplementing about five evergreen plantings in that area to, to get that buffering from which we'll be clearing for those utility So looking across from the post office, it looks similar to this now in, in the fall time, right? Left time. To the left of the existing utility pole shown up there, we will be removing those trees and our, and our entrance road will come in to access the site. And that's where we'll be supplementing the evergreen plantings to the left of that utility pole. But to the right of the utility pole will be where, where we'll be, excuse me, where we'll leave those existing trees there. So that'll act as an existing buffer supplement to the fifty-foot wide buffer there. So you can almost just barely see Art's, Art's tree line in there. And closer look at the solar modules, they'll be ground mounted and they will be back home to ten, twelve feet tall. The shore height will be about three to four feet tall. And these ground mounted arrays need a stable, stable surface that will be providing, removing the stumps and moving up the ground. So those foundations are secure and they won't have any chance of moving. And these photos are an example from a, a fixed tilt array. So the panels don't necessarily, don't necessarily move. It could be a tracker array, which the rows would look the same, but the glass would move as the sun moves. But the foundations would move and the rows would stay the same.
So these are going to move or they're not going to move?
That's an example of what they would look like if they didn't move and they were fixed, which is what we, we expected them to look like, but they might not necessarily just like that. It could be a different manufacturer as well, so they must.
No, what I mean is are they going to move or not going to move?
It's not known at this time. It usually depends on how much they'll get from the capacity of each panel at the time of construction. So beneath the array, we're proposing the New England Meadow mix, which will grow up a few feet tall and it will be mowed a couple of times per year. This photo was taken recently, so ideally all of the, all of the meadow would be grown up. There wouldn't be any patches of soil like that at all. This was recently under construction. So, and so the mowing about two, two times per year will maintain that brass height so it doesn't come up above that low height of the panels. And it's because if the meadow or brass comes up above the panels, that'll affect the, the sun exposure and the power generated overall from the system.
You don't mow underneath the panels?
You do have to sometimes, not, not all the times.
I know that was something Gavin was concerned about.
And maybe in that picture, you can see that there is a quite open area for the back of the panel to get in there and mow if needed.
Yeah, if they're doing a, if they're doing a quick mowing, they'll just do inside the row and not pay as much of attention underneath the shaded area of the panels.
I, I was just supporting what Gavin was saying. At, at our last meeting, I mean, mowing between the panels and that row like you're showing, mowing that twice a year, I got no issue with. But I don't really understand why you'd have to mow underneath the things twice a year. I think it's kind of counterproductive to what Gavin was talking about. Once a year, I can understand that because that'll keep the bushes and stuff like that if you did in the fall and keep all the bushes and stuff out. But that's a big area. There's a lot of wildlife over there, always has been. And Gavin's concern about the birds and stuff, I think, is well placed. So when we do our thing, I would like to see the board take that into consideration as one of our, our conditions.
So mowing will happen approximately late May, early June for the first row, and then early to late fall, late, late September, early October time. I mean, that'll all depend on the, the weather conditions and the season for the whole year. And if it's, if it's dry and those, the meadows aren't going too high, they could wait a little bit longer. It, it completely depends on the, on the conditions during the winter.
When you, when you take the topsoil and level everything all out, all the topsoil's going to be laid right back down? You're going to take a bulldozer, you said, and level the whole area?
Yeah, it's going to be smoothed out after the stumps.
Right. So all the topsoil will be left there on site?
Yes.
And it will be left, laid right back down?
Yes.
So there won't be any leaving on the site?
No, no, no. Yeah, yeah. Our goal is to keep the site stable and close to as an existing slopes as possible.
May I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Um, I'm new to the board and maybe people at home might have similar questions, not being familiar with this. But in the packet we've been given, there are conditional use review, findings of fact, and conclusions of law. And I would be interested to know who issues the finding of facts and conclusions of law. And the reason I'm asking that is that some of the concerns I'm hearing raised tonight around safe movement of emergency vehicles, for example, there is a conclusion of law that say, that states that, that that concern's been met. There's a conclusion of law that states that this use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds of fish, aquatic life, bird, and other habitat. So that's, I'm, I'm interested to know who issued these conclusions because depending on who that is and what review of facts and studying preceded that, you know, that may lace some of the concerns people are expressing.
We, we're supposed to do that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to answer that. That's a great question. So the packet that you were given, the, the first, the first ten pages of it, just for everyone at home. My name is Sarah Delguzzo. I'm one of the contract planners with the Town of Acton. I work with North Star Planning. A lot of you have probably seen my colleague Ben Smith at previous meetings, so I'm filling in for him this evening. So as far as kind of who determines those findings of facts and conclusions of law, so what's in your packet tonight is based off of our firm's review of the project. And when we state things like this use, you know, will have minimal impacts on wildlife and things of that nature, that's kind of based off of the due diligence that the applicant has, has done ahead of time and presented the board through their application and through their verbal testimony with the planning board, that they've met the standard of the ordinance that says, you know, based off of the use and the, and the application and the project, they're going to, you know, do everything that they're required to do to meet that standard that's in the town's ordinance. So that's kind of how it goes through. So for example, for things like safe maneuvering of emergency vehicles and such, you know, every application is going to be different and look at emergency vehicles in a different way. So for example, if this was a residential project, that would be a much bigger part of the conversation.
Certainly.
Whereas a lot of times, and I'm sure the applicant can speak on this as well, these, these systems, my understanding is that they're kind of controlled remotely. So should there be any sort of emergency shut-off happens off-site, so the need to kind of look at the safe maneuvering of a, of a fire truck, for example, to be able to get in and out and around quickly, isn't necessarily as relevant as it would be in, say, a residential project.
So is your client the applicant or the town?
The town.
The town. Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's great.
If I may, North Star started working for us a year ago. And what, what, what they write out is, is their opinions. Okay. We went through this on the last project. The planning board determines the finding of facts and stuff like that. And what North Star does, is supposed to do, when we, everybody gets going here, is tell us if we're right or wrong in what we're doing. You know, they give us their recommendation. And we go through the whole thing. They do it. That's how it's been done lately. But historically, the planning board comes up with these conditions and, and things like that. We used to use Southern Main Regional Planning. And we decided to change to North Star to make sure that we're doing everything right. And with the transition of code enforcement officers and planning board members, North Star has taken a bigger role. But at the end of the day, it's the planning board's responsibility to come up with the finding of facts and, and the conditions and all that. And hopefully under the guidance of like Sarah, and it's, it's all on the planning board. It's all on the planning board.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. That's good to ask and clarify.
If you want more comments from the public, I can go outside out there if you want. Just pretend, right?
And so after the array's life, which is estimated to be twenty to thirty years, it's going to be a decommissioning period for about six to eight weeks of removing all the panels and recycling any, any salvage value pieces on the property. And that'll start within six months after a ray shut off. And the applicant, Acton Solar, will be providing a letter of credit or cash escrow to the town prior to building permit approval. So the goal is to get the site back to stabilized state and it'll exist as meadow conditions after that. So I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, I, I don't worry about interrupting that. Feel free anytime. Did we come to an agreement on the escrow account? There was some talk about. No, no, not bond versus escrow, because we know we're going to have an escrow. But you remember Gavin, you were talking about the cost, like, like say if it's ten thousand dollars now, what's it going to be in twenty years? There was some conversation. Do you remember what that was, Gavin?
Yeah, there's on this memo right here from Ben Smith on number four. The board discussed improvements to the decommissioning security number, including submission of a revised decommissioning agreement after twenty years of operation as a condition of approval. So they're kind of putting in what they call is a escalator, but like the, the amount they're going to give us for the escrow is the same, but they, depending on the life of the panels, the escalator may come into play.
So what that means is, say if, say if they had to do fifty thousand for an escrow, and after ten years, or whatever time's determined, then they would have to give another five thousand dollars to put into escrow at that time? Or how would that, how do you, how do you, the board think that would work? Or Sarah? I have no idea.
It's written in this little paragraph here. Right, there's an escalator, so they put more money into the account if it goes.
Every amount of time that.
Yeah.
It's not clear to me when that starts. Does that start after twenty?
If I can clarify, that, so the money that's put in that account now is not the twenty year cost. It's probably associated with the timeline. What they did was they baked up that number through their calculations that's going to be in that consolar. And then on that number, they added an escalator for twenty years. But then on top of that, they included a contingency in case the life went beyond twenty years. So right now, they feel, we feel like we have the thirty year, or maybe even forty year cost of taking that part covered in that proposal.
So what's that dollar amount for the escrow?
It's between fifty and sixty, I don't know if they use that.
Yeah, and there are some works of updating the decommissioning plan. So that, that figure's actually going to change. And he's been asked us to remove salvage value from that numbers, the dollar amount is actually going to go up in cost. Salvage is the, is the recycling back money for the.
So we're going to be forced to somewhere in this ninety thousand dollar.
Yeah, we're going to be submitting that as a condition of approval before we get our building permit. So it'll all be lumped into the.
In fairness to you guys, the goal was to finish this tonight. And if we don't have any, the information like this that we're looking at, I don't see how we can approve it tonight. That is what I'm saying. Because usually we have all this in place.
What I, what I would say is, so Ben has proposed on his memo two conditions of approval, which we can look at. I think maybe let's discuss those after the public hearing. But I would say, just for all the board members as we're going through, and just making sure we're thinking about, you know, if, if, if there is outstanding information, for example, you know, if, if we're still waiting on a, a decommissioning plan, that's something that could be added as a condition of approval, like Jenna said, so it would be something that they would have to provide before their building permit was issued. And it would have to be to the, meet the standard, you know, that the board is anticipating seeing. There might be other things that we discussed tonight that we might want to add as a condition of approval, which we can definitely take notes on. If there is something that comes up that we don't think could fit as a condition of approval, we can discuss that. And I think as long as we have a, a clear path coming out of this meeting for the applicant, then that would be okay. But I do think it had, Ben was filling me in. It sounds like this has been in front of the board a few times now, so it would be nice to move it forward. But.
Yeah, I got nothing against moving it forward. And now you're saying that we have done that before. We will approve of the project. And with these conditions and this paperwork, whatever has to be in before they can have the permit.
Exactly.
I'm just trying to get stuff in the old man's, straight in the old man's head, you know?
Do I understand correctly that going into this, there would be sufficient funds to decommission it prior to twenty years or not? Because my concern is with technology changing and so forth, what if this becomes an obsolete technology in less than twenty years? Is there enough money to decommission it and clean up if that happens going into?
Yeah, so this decommissioning is set for the future.
Right.
So if, I mean theoretically costs are going to go up, but at this time it was possible. We've got money to cover the future costs if it's.
Can we touch on the permitting once again? We have about six thousand four hundred forty square feet of indirect wetland impact in the tree clearing area. We will be leaving the stumps in that area like we have, we have talked about a little bit. And that, we did submit that application already. It's a Natural Resource Protection Act, meaning to be tier one, weather alterations are. So we should be expecting approval for that pretty soon.
Guess I should have waited. Not asked the question.
And that concludes everything I had to present tonight.
I see him out there. He wants anything to say.
Any comments from the public on this? Or questions from the public?
Do you guys deal with the panels when they're decommissioned? What are they, I mean, I know we, we throw them away or whatnot. How does that, what do those go to?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, so. So they get organized on site and they get sorted for what community circle and what needs to be taken in the landfill. And they will be taken on regular solid waste landfill.
So there's nothing hazardous to the panels themselves, with the battery or something like that?
No, not at all. And considered in the state, they're considered regular solid waste and they're considered hazardous by law.
Jason, I don't know where they take the stuff now, but for a long time. Any hazardous waste, they used to take it over to Rochester. I know where the asbestos and all that stuff, that's where everybody used to take it.
But there's no hazardous waste in any of these panels, right?
If there's no more public comment, if you want to close the public hearing, and then we could do board discussion.
Yep, I guess we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up for a discussion with us.
Oh, yeah, I got paperwork here.
Mind if I jump in before the board starts?
No, that's not...
I just wanted to make a couple comments. Really, I just wanted to clarify for the record. At the moment, there's two proposed conditions of approval on page 10 of the memo from North Star Planning. So I'll just read them out for the record and for the board as you go into your discussion. So the first one has to do with the decommissioning. So prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide the town with a removal guarantee to be used by the town in the event the system ceases producing electricity for 12 months in a row, and to be used for the removal of the solar farm structures and underground facilities and to stabilize the site. The account and the amount and form of this guarantee must be acceptable to the town administrator, but could take the form of a cash escrow or a letter of credit. So that's the first proposed condition of approval.
Excuse me?
Yep.
I would again, I mentioned this before. What we decide here on conditions and stuff is between the planning board and the client. And the administration, which will be Jason, would set up the account with the treasurer. That's where it's always been. I brought up this last time. The involvement, and I mean no disrespect to Jen at all, please. The town administrator has never been involved in any of this, ever, in the history of the town. This is new verbiage.
So it would generally go to the treasurer?
The administration, which would be Jason, the code enforcement guy.
To code, okay.
Once it goes past us and we dump everything in his lap and he makes sure that everything's in order with all the conditions and with the escrow account and stuff like that, then he goes to the treasurer and says, "We need to set up this account" like Jennifer talked to us about tonight. There's been quite a bit of talk lately at the Slavens' meetings how they have nothing to do with anything on the planning board, the town administrator, or just trying to help out, which I appreciate. But there is a separation of the planning board and with quasi-judicial board. And there's a separation there between the planning board and the town's administration. You know, the code enforcement administration is directly does the will of the planning board. And that, I won't say anymore. It's up to the board whatever hell they want to deal with. It's a new thing and I don't think it belongs there.
I appreciate your comment, Dennis.
Yeah, and I'll just jump in. So in my experience, in other communities where we work, it generally is either the town manager or the town administrator who's approving any escrow accounts or letters of credits or things like that. But we can certainly talk to Jason afterwards and just make sure that it's going to the right person based off of how Acton does business. So that's an easy fix, I think.
Are we not...
We can talk about it yet.
Are we not saying basically that if it's not used to generate electricity for 12 months in a row, that basically what you're doing is a decommissioning? Isn't it the same thing? You're saying remove everything and so forth, or not?
Essentially. So in my understanding, there's kind of, I look at it in two ways, and maybe the applicant can clarify as well. But, you know, on one hand, there's kind of this abandonment principle. So, you know, if Acton Solar abandons the project and it's no longer generating electricity, you know, for 12 months, at that point, the town could then step in and say, "Okay, we're going to decommission the facility." Or it can be used, you know, at the end of the solar array's lifetime.
So my point with that is, if basically, to protect the town's interests, we're saying if you don't generate electricity for 12 months, then you're going to decommission, then the money's already there.
Exactly.
So it could just be worded that in the event that they don't generate electricity, then we revert to the decommissioning process. And we already have those funds in escrow. And so then we're not getting into whether or not the town administrator decides how much money and so forth? Is that...
That's pretty much what it's saying. Where the town administrator, or maybe in the case of Acton, it should say, "Read the code enforcement officer." You know, they're the ones that are approving the initial setup when the, once the planning board approves it. So say it gets approved this evening, prior to a building permit being issued, someone in the town needs to make sure that accounts are set up and there's a letter of credit and things like that. So we're kind of, we're talking about now, rather than, you know, who's kind of handling it at the end of the life of the solar. So this is saying, you know, who's going to deem that that form and amount is acceptable upon approval of the project? Does that make sense? Does that clarify?
Well, yes and no. Because to me, if we've determined what amount is acceptable 20 years from now and it's being held in escrow, then we know that there's enough for now. And so if next year they default, then we just say, well, then we revert to decommissioning. And we already know there's enough money because we calculated it for 20 years from now.
Yep, and that's what this is saying. Yep, exactly.
All right, thank you.
Secretary, can I propose maybe identifying someone in the commission just for tonight? Can you say to the town, and then you can work out who approves that?
I think the only reason why Ben worded it, town administrator, that's who he's been dealing with, because of, because...
He's putting on code enforcement.
Right. Because code enforcement wasn't around and we didn't have a secretary or a code enforcement.
Yeah, we can definitely...
So I think that's why Ben worded it, where he worded it, essentially.
And I'm not proposing. We have a town administrator. But five years from now or three years from now, we may not. The town may change the direction that they're working in. But one thing for definite, we're always going to have a code enforcement guy. Always.
Except for recently.
Well, we've had them. They just didn't stick around for longer.
Well, it was 24 years.
The one thing I would like to clarify on that first condition, and you mentioned it, is you're developing this decommissioning plan. It's going to show the calculations. So I think we ought to say, in that number one somehow, you know, rather than just giving us the removal guarantee, it's documented in this decommissioning plan. So that plan should come as part of the condition.
Before the permit's granted, yeah.
Because that gives us the ability to review their calculations and say, "Yeah, that's going to cover it 30 years down the road."
So something along the lines of the applicant shall provide a decommissioning plan and a removal guarantee?
Yeah, that would cover it.
You know, if the escrow comes in and they don't follow through?
Follow through the escrow?
With the decommissioning?
So they all follow through? Yeah, the money in the escrow is something the town can use to take it away.
If they do decommission it, then that...
Exactly. Yeah, I know which company's going to buy the site and their company that does this all in the Northeast, they're going to stop scouring or something, and they're going to take it away. But in case they go better up, the town's going to have that protection. We don't need any of that.
I mean, I'm planning on Jason staying here another 25 years. All right? So I'm trying to give you some more...
Yeah, thank you.
Job guarantees.
That's it. I don't have enough to deal with.
Never have enough.
So I have a couple tweaks to the language of the first proposed condition with the decommissioning plan, as well as changing it to be the code enforcement officer as the town staff employee. And then the second proposed condition has to do with the operations and maintenance plan. So prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy to begin operations, the applicant must provide the land use office with an operations and maintenance plan. And that's something, I know we discussed mowing. So that's maybe something we could add to that condition of approval if we wanted to think about any specifics with mowing underneath the panels.
Yeah, I think that was the proposal on the table, that the alleyways twice a year is fine, but underneath the panel, to limit them to once per year.
Once per year underneath the panels?
I'm sorry?
On once per year underneath the panels.
Under, under the...
If I could speak to that a little bit, that's going to be difficult for the solar developer. They're going to be paying local contractors to go in there to do this mowing twice a year. Usually they do mow the whole thing when they're out there, as much as they can reach with a reasonable size of mower. And speaking of R, it sounds like that orchard is mowed four times a year at least already. So I feel like by reducing the amount to two times a year, not limiting us to not mowing under the panels themselves twice a year, we're still improving what's happening with the amount for the grass and the areas. And I also want to make sure everyone understands that we've reached out to all the environmental agencies, Maine Fish and Wildlife, Maine Natural Areas, Historic Preservation, DVP. And they haven't identified any species out there that we are required to protect in special provisions, like reduce mowing. So ideally, the applicant would prefer to have the flexibility to mow it twice a year because that's their standard practice when it comes to maintaining these panels and access to unused panels. So we would prefer, obviously, that we have the first degree of knowledge of the whole thing twice a year versus being limited to what we can mow.
I appreciate the fact that you've checked with these different organizations. But I've been here long enough to know there's many species that aren't protected, that are very rare in the area now. And I think that was Gavin's whole point when he brought this up. I mean, there's a lot of birds that we just don't see anymore. If you see them, it's very rare. And it's because we have basically destroyed most of the habitat. And I appreciate that I mow that three or four times a year. Like I said before, I worked in an apple orchard for 17 years here in town. So I understand the workings of it. I just, I just think you don't have to mow under those panels twice a year. I don't, I don't think it's necessary. I just don't myself. But obviously, that's my opinion.
With the issuance of the findings of fact and conclusions of law that this would not disrupt the habitat, do you know whether or not the frequency of mowing was considered and contemplated in those?
So that standard that's included in the ordinance is generally referring to significant wildlife habitats that would have come up in an environmental review that the applicant would have done through state agencies.
Okay.
And that was my point. The state agencies don't see as a rule what somebody like I say enacting. You know what I mean? A big thing that was brought up with the clearing down to the doggy daycare was the owl habitat. Anybody that's been around here knows what there was for owls here 50 years ago and what there is now. And I'm not saying that this is going to affect the owl habitat. I'm just saying that's just one example. And there's places that the, what the agencies were talking about don't even list that as a consideration. You know, unless it's a certain kind of owl. You know what I mean? And owls are anywhere this big, full grown to, you know what I mean? I don't know, maybe I'm making a bigger deal out of something than it needs to be.
Oh, no, I think not. Gavin, what do you think about the time of the year of mowing?
I got this nesting and grassland birds pamphlets from the Audubon Society that I was looking at. And they do say, if you also be willing to restrict mowing, keep it before May 15th and after August 15th, that would help with bobolinks and other birds that may be nesting in there. Of course, we don't know if they're going to go in there or not. But it does seem like it's potential habitat for some sort of organisms.
Well, we know that now, based on what R is believing and the fact that most of that forest, most of that metalwork gradient is forest, right?
Right, sure.
So grassland, whereas the concern of it now, so trying to add special provisions to create habitat is, it seems to be beyond the ordinance that you have in place in town. It's kind of putting a special condition on a project that is not related to what you're trying to force in.
Well, we can put conditions on vegetation up and above, you know, your regular standards. It's in the ordinance. And this would just be just a perspective idea on how that we could create habitat for lots of different types of species, not just these specific birds as noted in this pamphlet.
Yeah, and we talked about that with the second law of the cabinet.
Right.
And if you take away the wood that they're cutting down, there's habitat in there, but you can replace it with a new habitat under Gavin's, you know, such.
You mentioned mowing before May 15th?
Yeah.
Yeah, for sometime August.
Yeah, for sometime August.
August 15th. That's what this recommends.
Yeah, I mean, that's, having lived on a farm in 21, the hay tends to grow and gets harvested. Usually it gets your grass built between May 15th and July and after harvesting in June.
Right, but you wouldn't be harvesting hay in there.
No, we do everything with the hay, right? The hay doesn't make it...
Yeah, oh, sure. Just...
It goes up by 17th this year because I hate on May 17th, so.
I'm sorry?
I said it was up high enough this year for May 17th, so that's pretty close. I don't think that's an unreasonable request.
When are you going to pay again?
I'm paying now.
So you're aging this 17th and you're aging it again?
Right, not in the same field, different field.
I mean, there is wildlife, birds that live in that orchard. And they live in the trees that you guys are planning on taking down. There's birds that have nests in the apple trees, pust in the woods. So, I mean, there is bird habitat on that property, like, there is. That's all.
Well, that's what I say, if Gavin's saying you're taking away one habitat, like, can we add something for the grass and birds? Because they're going to come eventually, you know?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Nobody in the solar developer wants to avoid the area of the panels being the habitat. They also have to worry about the operations of the neighbors themselves and access, you know, the areas and putting the grass down to a similar...
Just to jump in if I might. So based off of the review of the application and the project, the applicant has met... the applicant has met, you know, the standard of the ordinance as far as doing their due diligence for the environmental review and, you know, not triggering any, any rare significant wildlife habitats within the project area. So I would say from, from the board's perspective, you know, the applicant has met the standard of the ordinance that you're here to enforce. That being said, you know, it is certainly within the board's purview to request, you know, additional accommodations, but to, um, you know, not approve the project based off of the applicant not necessarily meeting them, those additional requests is where you kind of start getting into that gray area a little bit. I think, you know, the board can certainly request things and try to work with the applicant to meet a middle ground, but I, I think we are balancing two things here, you know, one, I don't think anyone in this room is disagreeing that, you know, it'd be great if we could increase the wildlife and the habitats, you know, throughout that meadow, but we also, you know, the applicant does need to consider the operations of the project. So I think we're kind of looking at it from, you know, two different ends.
Gavin, maybe some language, because I, I think that's really a good point. If we're given the flexibility to mow if we have to after May 15th and before August 15th, I think we'd be happy with including our own end plan that whenever possible, we'll mow this field twice a year before May 15th or after August 15th, but if needed, we can mow it in those timeframes.
What's our rationale for having to mow? I can see it on the low part of the solar panels that are three feet. I can see having to mow under that, but on the high part of the, most of it is in the, you know, what the, what, eight feet or whatever it was, the height.
Oh, yeah, 12 feet.
12 feet. I mean, so to have to mow underneath there more than once a year doesn't make any sense because that grass, I can promise, is never gonna get up to 12 feet or eight feet or six feet.
So my understanding is that the applicant, and please correct me if I'm wrong, will be employing local contractors to do that work. So I think it's more of a logistical concern to be able to communicate, you know, you're mowing only this section, you know, the guys are just gonna, it sounds like the guys are just gonna go out there and they're gonna mow what they can mow. So it sounds like it's more of a logistical communication, you know, over the next 30 years, making sure that it's mowed properly every single.
I mean, that's. Do you want this sort of long vegetation ruling up against the bottom of the panels? Because the section of the panels is not.
No, I appreciate that, but if you're gonna contract somebody to mow it, you contract them to mow a certain amount in the spring and a certain amount in the fall. I mean, that's just, I'm just.
Does the grass have an effect on the solar panels? Just curious since we're talking about mowing.
It's a lot of effects, yeah. The shading on solar panels is a big effect on the switches.
Underneath, will it impact the operation of the solar panel if it reaches up to it?
I mean, there's no moving parts, but there's always the desire to be able to go in there and spec connections to have, to make sure you're not introducing organic material against these bolted connections. It's not a pieces that, you know, rust or, you know, full. It's just like if you have a swing stand in the backyard, you don't want grass running around it because bugs start to follow on it. You get critters, you get moisture that hits in there. It's about the long-term effects on the panel underneath the racket. So understanding that, we certainly prefer to have a basic time restriction on this and flexibility if we need to mow within, maybe August time if that's possible. But we would prefer to do it more even twice a year, I think that's more important than taking the rest of the time.
As hell personally, I'm not willing to go along with that as a condition.
The, uh, the middle ground you proposed, just help me understand it again. So twice a year before May 15th and after August 15th and then as needed for operation of the panels.
If, we need to put an if around six feet, it's 20 feet, um, we go to mow within that timeframe.
I think that's reasonable, my opinion.
What's that, John?
I, I think that's reasonable, my opinion. We get them to, to try to stick to the, or to stick to the, uh, the complete cutting and the timeframes Gavin outlined, but then from the operation of the, the business, if the panels are impacted because the grass is getting up in between time, the grass is getting up too high, it's reasonable for the operators to have to address it.
I mean, I'm not gonna die on my sword on this, you know what I mean? I just, my own personal experience and what I know, what I've dealt with. Whenever we put conditions on, whether it's a project like this, whether it's a gravel pit, whether it's a rebuild of a house, um, there's always stipulations that the planning board puts on of conditions that the applicant isn't always happy with. And there's always a reason why they don't want to do it. And I mean no disrespect to anybody, uh, you guys, but my experience on the planning board, he's, they're defending what they want to do, which is the right thing for them to do and I appreciate all the work they've done. But for every condition that we wanna put on, different projects, there's always a reason why we shouldn't do it. And, and this mowing under this, uh, if you look at the size of those panels, three quarters of those panels, the grass is never gonna touch if you mow it in the fall. It's never gonna touch it.
Right, so the, the condition would include, but the condition would include if it does, that they could address. I mean, I agree with you, I, I've been a long.
What the hell is that, John?
Understand that there are conditions and sometimes they don't like it, but I think it's incumbent upon us to try and find that middle ground.
I agree, I agree, but what historically has happened, and Gavin can speak a little bit to this, is there's been conditions put in stuff and it's followed for a while and then all of a sudden those conditions aren't followed and who's gonna watch it? And that's, and that's why, no, I'm saying if you leave it up to the opinion of the person operating, then if they wanna go in and do it, then they just can go in and do it, say it was necessary.
Well, I believe that the gentleman suggested that the grass had to be three feet tall or higher for them to do that. And why couldn't it be the same as trying to get permission to cut trees, for example, that they, if they want that permission, then they have to go through code enforcement to get it? Just show them, yeah, it's three feet tall this year, can we cut it? I mean, would that satisfy your concern? If it's three feet tall or taller, they just need to have it reviewed?
I would be hesitant to, to add that stipulation for, uh, one, for the sanity of code enforcement and, um, but two, just, just for, you know, enforceability of, you know, if it's not above three feet in this area, but it is in this area, does that mean they can mow the, you know, it just gets a little bit hard to enforce.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I do agree with Mr. Long that if there's no oversight, and this is a general, not specific, if there's no oversight, if there's no consequence, if you go ahead and cut it when you're not supposed to, then there really is no reason to follow the special condition that the board put on. So I, I think there does need, when a condition's imposed, there needs to be a consequence if you don't follow it or some approval before.
Is your concern for the habitat for mowing?
Yeah.
Just asking.
Just strictly adjacent, that's all.
I'm just, it's a good concern.
I'm serious, the following person, Jason, to enforce everything and how much his future workload.
I'm gonna hear you guys if you show your grass.
Well, that, you know, we've talked about myself. Personally, I wanna give him as much worth as we can give.
Future workload, if you can have time to go in there with the yardstick and save his.
I'm only going when it's apple season, too.
Yeah, maybe, uh, maybe.
It's challenging, yeah.
I think you'd work much of it if they just, the applicant liked the idea and went with it.
Right.
Yeah, we can suggest it and.
I don't see any code enforcement going out anywhere measuring grass by with a yardstick.
I said maybe we're making too much of this.
No, and I understand Gavin's point about the birds, you know, but I just don't, like, what's there saying?
I miss them.
It's a touchy wording, I would say.
But I, I think maybe, that maybe we need to start working through, uh.
Go through the conditions.
Through the patent?
Yeah, you know, because again, there's some things and then recommendations in here that, um, I don't agree with. So do we wanna start going through the, I'm sorry, I can't think of the words.
Findings?
Finding of facts.
You get stuck on the first one.
What's that?
You wanna do the site plan review first, first in the packet? Because there's two, we have a site plan review and then we have a conditional use.
Right.
Right.
They're very similar, but they're different.
The site plan review, finding of fact, you're talking Gavin?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
That starts on page two, right? The other one starts on five.
How do you guys usually do it? Do you want me to read through them or?
Well, last time, last time we read through all the finding of fact and then we read through all the conclusions of law, but I think this time if one person reads the finding of fact and then one person responds with a conclusion of law that goes with it, then it might speed us up.
Okay.
So one person just read through the finding of fact and then I, I would read the conclusion of law, say.
Okay.
But Gavin, you know, this is a procedural thing and this is to Ashley, if I may. Now, normally when we do that, we go through the checklist, right? And normally the secretary would have the form and, and check stuff, whether it's not applicable or yes or no or whatever, it, it would go through the meeting. And normally what would happen after the meeting, when you went back down to your domicile downstairs the next day, is you'd clean up whatever paperwork you got and then send it to Chris and, and Sarah to make sure we've got everything right, uh, that we did. You don't have to sit there and listen to me again, uh, with all the stuff I've got to say, uh, watching the video.
You gotta get, you're saying this is your last meeting, so you need to hear it.
You guys, this is my last time, so, you know, you just have to tell me to shut up.
Right, we gotta make the best.
We wanna go home. It, it's up to you, Ashley, but normally that's how, how it's been done and it saves you a lot of work.
Well, we just need a extra copy of site plan review process checklist for the second, basically.
What, what one's that Gavin? What page is that on?
Just the, the pink one in the binder you're holding.
Here, Ashley, you can have it. And you can do that, 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 that I'm not gonna need it after tonight.
Okay.
And that's, that's the document we're talking about. I apologize for putting you on the floor and you don't have to do what I'm saying, I'm just trying to help you out.
I mean, I'm three weeks in and I'm starting the nuances of the job, so.
And like I said, I don't try to tell you, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, it's just.
Do you mind if I take this?
I don't care, no, I got it. I follow.
All right. So as far as the checklist goes, um, comparing it with the memo, um, is it okay if we start on page four, which starts at approval standards and criteria rather than, kind of the beginning parts are more submission requirements, you know, application completeness checks? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Which I know our office has gone through and made sure that we have the full application and that the application's complete, so, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. I'm almost thinking, I might read the conclusion of law first and then the finding. Because the conclusion of law is kind of like the standard and then the finding is how the applicant has met that standard. Does that sound okay? Okay, so the first conclusion of law is the plan for development will reflect the natural capabilities of the site to support development. So site plan review, finding of fact, number one, utilization of the site, which addresses that conclusion. So the plan reflects the natural capability of the site in that vernal pools are buffered and wetland areas have been identified. Natural drainage patterns will be maintained for the grading, drainage and soil and erosion plan provided. Post-construction, the applicant will be seeding the project area and a New England meadow seed mix to support pollinator activity will be provided. The area within the perimeter fence will be mowed twice per year. The perimeter fencing will include a six-inch wildlife gap between the bottom of the fence and the ground, uh, which will allow for small animals to pass through. Snow storage locations have been shown on the plan sheets, C102 and C103. The operations and maintenance plan will be, will call for plowing the access road when snow depth exceeds six inches and that will be, uh, be a condition of approval number two. Any questions before I move on? Do you want me to just keep going until there's questions?
I had a question, I was wondering if the, the applicant would be willing to, um, when they harvest the 6,440 square feet of wetland, if you'd be willing to use equipment that didn't require driving and rutting in the area? Could you harvest it without driving in that area or?
That's a good question. We already have those on DVP permit consent, so if they're limit earth disturbance when removing trees and wetlands. We could, we could certainly consider adding a stipulation in the contract documents that says earth disturbance will be moved up there and use low-pressure track equipment to remove the trees.
Yeah, and some of those pieces of equipment can reach pretty far into the, just kind of depends on what you're using.
It's a small area where weapons were impacted, so that could be used to accommodate that.
Yeah, that would be nice.
But typically they do put a large wood mat down and they drive equipment over that when they need to and then they remove that and the ground isn't necessarily disturbed.
All right, uh, so the next, uh, vehi, so vehicular access to the site will be on roads, which will have adequate capacity to accommodate the additional traffic generated by the development. This is very low, uh, traffic producing, barely any traffic producing. Um, so access to the site is from Sam Page Road, Public Town Road. The project will not generate 100 peak hour trips and will only be accessed for ongoing maintenance such as mowing and inspection once construction is complete. That's pretty straightforward. So access to the site, there will be safe and convenient vehicular access to and from the site. The access is from a new gravel access road from Sam Page Road, which we saw during the applicant's presentation. Sorry, I'm flipping back and forth a bit. Accessways into the site will meet the standards outlined in the ordinance. So the accessway, the new 15-foot access road is approximately 220 feet from the Sam Page Road Route 109 intersection. Location of the new access road exceeds spacing requirement from existing entrances and intersections. So we're on number six, off-street parking will conform to the standard. So around number six, off-street parking will conform to the standards outlined in the ordinance. That's not applicable via, there will be no formal parking at the site. Light traffic will be anticipated on-site for maintenance needs. Sorry, I skipped number five. The layout of the site will provide for safe movement of passenger service and emergency vehicles through the site. So we discussed this earlier. Adequate turning area and parking space is provided at the turnaround, located at the end of the gravel access road, sounds like will be for maintenance vehicles only. So number seven, the site will provide for a system of pedestrian ways appropriate to the development. This is not applicable. There will be no, not open to the public, no pedestrian ways or connectors between the property and neighbor areas adjacent to the site, no pedestrian circulation within the site. Number eight, adequate provisions will be made for the collection and disposal of all stormwater runoff. So stormwater management, there will be no adverse effect on downstream drainage or budding properties. Stormwater will not adversely impact downslope areas. The project is not anticipated to result in a change of peak flows due to site conversion from a forested to meadow condition and will not change existing drainage patterns. Project is not located within direct watershed of a lake most at risk from new development or urban impaired stream. Project as proposed has wetland impacts of 6,440 square feet, a total of 10,940 square feet of impervious area, including 9,930 square feet associated with gravel access roadway. And the project does require a DEP stormwater permit. Is that, that's correct, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Clarifies the stormwater term by the rules.
Yeah, that's, okay. I was like, mm, okay. I'll adjust that language. Number nine, all building, site and roadway designs and layouts will harmonize with existing topography and will conserve desirable natural surroundings to the fullest extent possible.
Sarah, do you know what the site view is for putting in a new road, the site distance?
I don't know off the top of my head. Is it in the checklist?
What was that question? I'm sorry.
The site distance that you have to have coming onto a town road.
Right, it's either 325 or 350. You did check those.
Okay.
Site distances, yeah.
I think it's the lower one, believe it or not.
Very well could be.
I think it is 325.
But where they're putting in the road isn't 325.
Well, it is, it is in the full-speed direction going away from the intersection. The intersection is closer, but we wouldn't have full speed and you wouldn't have a car traveling that someone couldn't see. So typically, intersection is allowed to be as close as 100, 150 feet. And you don't look at site distance if you have an intersection right here, because that would stop. In the other direction, we have, I think we measured more than 300 feet of site distance.
Right, I appreciate that, but we, this board has always looked at the site distance, no matter where it was.
Right, and we met that.
Well, north is 300, you're only 200 and something from the intersection.
Can you, you can see the intersection from, so I think what the applicant's saying is that, you know, they've met the site distance all the way to the intersection and you can't really look at site distance past the intersection because, you know, you can't, cars aren't going to be coming at full speed, does that make sense? So the intersection kind of cuts off the max site distance based off of the proximity.
So maybe that needs to be addressed in the ordinance to have it changed?
Tweak the language to address intersections?
Yeah.
So nine, we're looking at existing topography, so we have some findings of facts to do with erosion control, so all erosion and sedimentation control devices will be constructed in conformance with main erosion and sediment control best management practices. This is included in the plan set with notes and details. Temporary erosion control measures will include a silk fence, which will be installed prior to all construction activity in areas where soil disturbance may result in erosion, stone check dams, which will be installed in grass-lined swales and ditches during construction, temporary seeding and temporary mulching. Permanent erosion control measures will include rip-wrapped aprons, topsoil, seed and mulch and ditch lining in North American green S-75 erosion control mesh. All right, so 10, the development will provide, will be provided with a system of water supply that will provide each use with adequate water supply. That's not applicable, no water supply for the site. As well as number 11, which has to do with sewage compliance, not applicable, none proposed on the site. The development will be provided with utilities to meet the anticipated use of the project, so number 12. All utilities are anticipated to meet the use of the project and will include approximately 300 feet of overhead power lines, which will be brought to the site by six wooden utility poles and approximately 475 feet of underground conduit connecting to equipment. An electrical permit application will be submitted to the town prior to construction. Number 13, the project will minimize disturbance to the natural landscape.
What was the electrical again, Sarah? I'm sorry. What would you say about the electrical, again, about the permit?
Yep, so an electrical permit application will be submitted to the town prior to construction.
The town isn't doing electrical stuff anymore?
State.
The state?
It would be, okay.
Yeah, the town.
Submitted to the state, okay. I can update that. All right, good to know. All right, so 13, natural features. Approximately nine and a half acres of trees will be cleared to provide adequate sun exposure to the panels. The stumps in the cleared wetland area will be left to grow into low-height vegetation. There will be no extensive grading or filling to the site and the amount of vegetation cleared overall will be reduced as much as possible. 14, the proposed site development will not adversely impact the quality of, the quality or quantity of groundwater. There's no proposed water supply systems or underground storage, so that's not applicable. So 15 is water quality protection, same thing, not applicable, will not generate, locate discharge or permit the discharge of oil, gas, chemicals, et cetera, other waste items. Not applicable. 16, the project will not store any hazardous or radioactive materials. Also, that is correct, they will not handle, store or use hazardous or special or radioactive materials. 17, the development will not adversely affect the water quality or shoreline of any adjacent water body. Project is not within any shoreline zones, not applicable. The applicant has financial and technical capacity to carry out the project in accordance with the ordinance and approved plan. The applicant has proved the financial and technical capacity in accordance with the ordinance. 19, the proposed development will provide for adequate disposal of solid wastes. The proposal will not generate solid waste and will not require solid waste disposal, so not applicable.
There's not, there's not a requirement? Or do they have some kind of, whether it's a portable toll or there's something kept on-site for the workers?
I don't believe so. My understanding is that there won't be enough workers on the site at any given time to trigger any sort of requirement for a port of body or anything like that, any sort of restroom facility, if I understand.
Really folks can be nice with the site, it's something like a pickup truck to stop, stop in for an hour or two and forget what's going on.
How about during the construction of the project?
Construction, this is a full permit, there will be construction, so it's, construction solid waste is developed. And all of them fit to build a kind of process.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, you know, I was gonna ask a quick question.
All right. So 20, the proposed development will include appropriate measures to protect historic and archaeological resources. So Main Historic Preservation Commission has concluded that there are no historic or archaeological or architectural properties affected by the proposed solar array. 21, the site is consistent with the town's floodplain management provisions. The project is mapped within Zone C, which is an area of minimal flood hazard. 22, the site will meet fire protection standards. The proposed project does not include any buildings, therefore will not require fire protection. So that's site plan review. Shall I keep going to conditional use? Some might be a little overlapping, but... Okay. All right, so conditional use, condition, conclusion of law. The use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird or other wildlife habitat. So the findings of fact, the state of Maine has not identified the site of having any essential habitats. Applicant states tree cutting will be done in accordance to the standards outlined in the zoning ordinance, which states that adjacent to other water bodies, tributary streams and wetlands, a well-distributed stand of trees and/or other vegetation is, that's not applicable.
Excuse me, again.
Yep.
I would like to see when we, one of our conditions with that wetland, that we do as they said, the lay mats down for low wind pit on the wetlands when they cut it.
My understanding is that that is going to be covered through their DEP wetland impact permit.
I... Okay, but I don't see why we couldn't put that in the condition because I do know pieces of property that have had permission from DEP to cut pieces and the roots through them are about this deep. And I just think it's a condition that we could put in, that they use mats.
Yeah, I'm here with that. Okay.
Yeah. I assume we want to kind of go over the conditions as we go through the, how do you guys want to go?
Might as well.
At the end or as we're going?
Uh, myself personally, it's easier for me as we're going, but that's up to the rest of the board.
Sorry, I'm just writing down. All right.
They're going in with a timber harvester, is that what it is? They're going in with a timber harvester, is that what the plan is?
Couple of horses.
Okay, so B, under conclusions of law, conditional use, the use does not impact shore cover and visual or actual access to the water bodies, as I mentioned before, that's not applicable. C, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is allowed by zoning.
I don't think that's true. I don't think so was addressed in the comprehensive plan. I think that comprehensive plan was written long before solar was even an issue.
Do...
I don't have it with me, but I am one of the few people who probably read it about six times and I don't think so was addressed in it.
No, I've, I have looked at the act and comp plan, but it has been a little while.
I'm upset.
Well, isn't, isn't that a way to state that it doesn't conflict with it? I mean, if you had a plan that dated back pre-automotive and all that talked about was horses, that doesn't mean that an automobile conflicts with the plan.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, it just wasn't...
But what they're saying is it complies with it and that's different terminology.
No, they said it doesn't conflict with it.
It's consistent with... Sorry, the conclusion, the conclusion of law is stated in a way that says it is consistent with the comp plan, but then the finding of fact does say that it does not conflict.
Okay.
So the conclusion of law is the language specifically from the ordinance and then the finding is kind of how we justify that we're meeting that standard, so it's kind of confusing, but...
Yeah, I'm fine.
Yeah. Do we feel good about that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. All right. Traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in the, in the town's ordinance and traffic congestion has been met and, has been addressed in accordance with performance standards in the ordinance. So D, upon completion of the construction of this project, this site will not generate regular or periodic traffic, visits to the array will only be on occasional basis, as we mentioned. E, the project is not located with, located in a flood hazard zone, so this is in an area of minimal flood hazard, as we mentioned. F, the project will not be generating any wastewater or solid waste, we discussed that. G, the project will not transport, store or dispose of any hazardous material, it's correct, we discussed that. The project site will continue to handle 25-year storms without adverse impacts on adjacent properties as it had prior to development, which is true based off of the stormwater calculations. I, adequate provisions to control soil and erosion and sedimentation have been made, that is correct.
Does that include wind storms?
I believe that is only including water levels, is my understanding. So rain.
Winds are picking up, they don't seem ever dying down and it's been mentioned several times of winds that are picking up. If you remember Hurricane Maria, go back to Puerto Rico and what happened to the solar panels, the second largest one in the, in the country, I believe, what, 46% was taken out by wind?
So there is a very detailed wind analysis that you, to make sure they have a foundation for the, up in the zone. You can't, you can't plan for the...
Major.
...major or crazy, but they did a pretty, pretty effective safety development.
But I've noticed the wind picking up more and more every time. If you was up at your house, you'd need a lot of hot wind, yeah?
Yeah, that's also part of the structural design, you consider snow loads, wind loads, all those kinds of things.
Okay.
So J, there's adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed project, not applicable, there's no water required. K, the provisions for buffer strips and onsite landscaping will provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odors and the light. So the provided landscaping plan shows adequate buffering that will screen use from Route 109 and Sanborn Road. Once construction is complete, the solar array will not generate noise, dust, dirt, odor, et cetera, or any other similar nuisances. L, all performance standards in this ordinance applicant to the proposed use will be met, applicable to the proposed use will be met. So going through those performance standards, the first one has to do with buffering of adjacent uses. Applicant provides landscaping buffer and states the array will be constructed to generally follow the slope and terrain of the existing landform. The solar array will not exceed 15 feet in height at any one point, other than the interconnection poles that are used to tie into the distribution lines along the road frontage. The second performance standard has to do with clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting. The applicant will submit a plan for selective cutting outside the area to be developed in accordance with this section of the ordinance that will maintain a well-distributed stand of trees and vegetation, I believe that's been included. Water quality protection, which we discussed earlier, so the site will not store or discharge any untreated or inadequately treated liquid gases or solid materials that will harm water quality. quality. Stormwater runoff, the site will minimize stormwater runoff and will not change drainage patterns. And the last one is in regards to filling, grading, or other earth-moving activity, which we discussed earlier. All of these on here, buffering of adjacent uses, landscaping, clearing or removal of vegetation activities other than timber harvesting, stormwater, essential services, and soils, the applicant has provided adequate information showing compliance to all of those items. And then lastly, archaeological and historic resources as designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected, so the applicant, as I mentioned before, has provided the Maine Historic Project Review Response Letter, that there are no archaeological sites or other cultural resources on or associated with the project site. I believe that those are all the conclusions of law. Any questions or comments?
I have one question. Have there ever been instances of solar panels creating fire? Are there any instances where, can solar panels create a fire? Okay. Well, the reason I asked the question was actually back to the issue of grass and if a solar panel could ignite, you know, that may be another reason to consider keeping grass shorter rather than longer, but...
Very little possibility of that.
Okay. Thank you.
So currently, well, it's the board of many, I was going to go through the conditions at one time, but maybe I'll wait if anyone has any more comments.
I'm pretty ready to agree on the conditions.
Okay, so the first one I have is in regard to the cash escrow or letter of credit, so the decommissioning performance removal guarantee. So I have to add in that language that the decommissioning plan to be provided to the town as well, and then to change the town administrator to the code enforcement officer. So that's condition number one.
And as it's creating what account? An escrow account?
Escrow, yeah.
Escrow or a letter of credit, is the way it's written?
No.
We get rid of the letter of credit.
Just escrow account?
Yes, escrow.
That was discussed at the last meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the reason why I say that is because this is what we've consistently done, and I feel that everything we should do should be consistent.
I thought we were, we're no middle of the ball.
What's that?
I thought we were definitely not doing the ball, and we're...
Escrow.
Yeah, we're just doing escrow.
Just escrow.
Yeah. I think we're just taking out the letter of credit wording.
The other thing is credit worthiness can change over time, so you're better off having an escrow.
So that's number one.
Yeah.
Number two is the issuance, prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy to begin operations, applicant must provide the operations and maintenance plan. So currently, I have it in here that I believe what we landed on was that mowing would occur before May 15th and after August 15th, unless grass exceeds, or meadow exceeds three feet, in which case applicant would mow as needed. And then I have a third one that was just added based off of discussion, which essentially would say that the applicant agrees to use temporary mats during construction to avoid wetland impacts.
Could I, not wetland impacts, but to avoid impact to soil that's been wet?
Yeah, yeah. Yep, thank you.
You said it a lot better than I did.
Yeah, me too. To avoid soil impacts within the wetlands. Any questions or comments from the board on those three conditions?
Is that the only three conditions? Oh, Molly, can I do better than that? What's that? I do have to say, I appreciate what you guys are doing, and the reason why I talk as much as I do really is try to generate discussion on stuff that we're doing, give people some things to think about. And lots of times when I say stuff, it isn't that I'm against what you're doing, it's just I want to make sure that the public and the people on the board get as many questions answered as it can be. And as our old code enforcement officer always said about me, usually when I ask a question is usually I already know the answer, I just try to see whatever the hell else thinks that it is. But I love talking. After tonight, this is it. Well, you never know. I mean, myself personally, I'm all for approving the project with these conditions. I don't know what anybody else thinks.
Say that again.
I said I'm all for approving this project tonight with those conditions fully stated. Say good luck. Is that a motion? Said a motion, sunny days, wash your head. Yes, that is a motion. I make a motion to include the solar array project. Oh, Kelly Orchard, so Kelly, I'm sorry. Right, Kelly Solar, Acton Solar LLC, Kelly Orchard Inc.
Do I get a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Well, thank you all so much, but I've been enjoying work, really appreciate the discussion.
Me too. It met an awful lot of nice people being on this board, I tell you.
I don't think I can vote yet. As an alternate, I don't vote, right?
Right.
Only if needed. Thank you.
No, you're right, not today.
Thank you very much.
Good job. You next, and you'll be a regular member.
I guess we'll move on to the Whitetail Bridge Properties LLC, proposed two-house subdivision, map 251 lot 008, sub 001. This is just for us only, we have, will appear on July 15th. Just to kind of be proactive, because I know this has been around, my gathering and understanding, maybe looking to do a site walk, so everybody knows what we're looking at on July 8th, which is...
Yeah, so Thursday?
Yeah. If that will work for everybody.
July 18, 00, 6 o'clock?
Yeah.
And where do we meet?
How do we describe it, Gavin? You know where Barnyard?
I know where it is.
Yeah.
There isn't a lot of parking there, right?
Well, I think we can park where they were logging, the initial logging site was, on the landing there. I went, I go by it every day, look at it kind of quickly.
Right, yeah, if you have a truck, I want to go, yeah.
Yeah.
So Whitetail?
Yeah. So I guess you could park there, or there's two spots across the street where they've been kind of, kind of seldom land, cars could fit in there too, so...
Okay, so we have to say...
Yeah, at 6:00.
We have to specify that, right?
What's that?
We have to specify that for the announcement?
Yeah, for 6:00, yeah.
Public notice.
I like notice.
What the address would be, near Barnyard Daycare.
Yeah, that's...
It's as close as we're going to get.
Right.
I mean, oh, you guys are going to get.
I don't know her address or her...
You don't know where Barnyard is? You can ask.
Do you know where Barnyard is?
I don't.
Are you Milton Mills Road?
It's close to my name, which is Bernard, so...
You know where Milton Mills Road is?
I do.
We're heading towards, take a right on the, off the, on the line?
Sure.
Where is it, probably four miles?
Top of the first rise, I think.
Remember the old town farm yesterday?
Yeah, it's the top of the first rise.
Yeah. You remember that?
Kind of, yeah.
No, you just don't. You tore that building down where you was born. See what I mean? I probably know nothing.
Exactly. I'm glad I'm from out of town, so you don't know much.
About three miles from 109.
Yeah, so...
About five miles from 109, three, okay.
I guess.
I'm sure I'll see it.
Yeah, go past, yeah, your school, go past what's Santa Paige Road, go up around the next sharp corner.
Down past the pound, pound, and you keep going.
Yeah.
I'm sure I'll find it. Thank you.
Big white house on the left, and then it's got a big fence out in the yard for the, keep the kids confined so they're not...
No, way before, well, way before Halloween.
Oh, I think I drove past that.
Yeah, they've got a big fence, and she's got a bunch of playground equipment up in the yard and stuff.
So, may I ask a question about this, which kind of reverts back to what we were talking about earlier, about conditions and so forth, and then enforcement and oversight? I noticed that this says, the property from which these lots are proposed was created in 2019. These lots represent the second and third lots within a five-year period necessitating subdivision review. At the time the lots were developed, was there any representation that there wouldn't be subdividing, further subdividing, or anything like that?
So I don't know. So the reason why, so the definition of subdivision within the state is any parcel of land that's divided into three or more lots within a five-year period. So this is technically, we're hitting the third lot threshold, so previously it did, this did not have to come to the town to be approved, it was able to be done administratively. So it's because this is the third, second and third lot within that period of time, so now it's triggering a subdivision.
And here in Acton, I believe it's two lots.
In 2019?
Yeah. You can do two lots in five years, and the third lot would kick you into a subdivision.
Yeah, that's correct.
And what I'm wondering is, because we've had subdivisions, and I don't know anything about this project, other than right here, through the great line, if these are family lots, then it's not under subdivision regulations. And I understood that they were family lots.
I think even if it's being conveyed to a family member, it still needs to go through subdivision.
No, I promise you it doesn't.
So, and what you're saying is that...
I was just having lawyers today about that.
And what you're saying is that these are being conveyed to family members?
I heard that, I don't know if it's true or not, but I just wanted, the transition of people coming and going is if something got missed, I guess.
We can look into that between now and the site walk.
This is a shame to put somebody through it if it's not necessary, I guess, is it? Five members, I mean, family members, you can do 10 lots.
I have an address for you, Bernard.
No, because I've gone through it with my family.
I thought it was like one every five years.
That's not my family. Family isn't covered under that, it's an exception to media family. I'm not saying about cousins or whatever, but sons, daughters like that.
Yeah, we can definitely double check it. I know there's some exceptions for family, but yeah, I don't know exactly what it is.
Like I said, I just signed a bunch of paperwork today for land use, so... Has it been through that?
Well, actually, the applicant is an LLC, and that's, so that's not an individual. So that might be why.
Yeah, very well could be.
Yeah.
Good point.
That's...
You're going to make a good member, so...
Have to get it all in, eventually, eventually, with training.
Has the board officially accepted this application as well? I would say to do that as soon as possible.
No, last time we didn't do anything with it, right?
And Ben even recommended that before we do, he had to address, it was in his notes, there was something he had, they had, he thought they should address in terms of roads.
So, yeah, so the way that the layout is right now, essentially what they're doing is they're creating a back lot that doesn't have road frontage. So there was some, I had a conversation with Ben, I thought the applicant might be here tonight and we could ask some questions about kind of ownership over the last five years, and what, it sounds like there's some additional transfer of land that's going to happen after this that is in regards to the back lot, and we might recommend that maybe they just do it all during this process, if they're going to convey part of that back lot to another lot so it has frontage, they might as well do it now so they don't have to come back.
They have to build a road to town standard, and it has to have at least 250-foot road frontage.
Will that be state road, so they're different?
No, to town standard, that road has to be built. We just did it a little while ago up on Buzzard Road, remember Gavin? The guy that wanted to cut off some of that subdivision up there, he wanted, and when you do this, you have to build it to town standard, that's the ordinance, it's not a, it's not an option, and you have to have 250 feet of frontage. Now, what they could do is use, well, they won't be able to there, but you could use like the existing road if you only had 100 feet on the existing road, Milton Mills Road, for example, and then you could build 150 feet of road, town standard, and even one like that, you'd have your 250 feet of road frontage. That's what we've done in the past.
So I think the thought was that, I don't know if it was the whole, there's some portion of the back lot that may be conveyed to an abutting property, which would give them road frontage, I think is what the thought process was, but I don't know, so that was a question that I was hoping to ask tonight.
A back lot, they have to have a town standard road.
So I think if the board is going to schedule a site walk, the board should accept the application as it is, and then if anything does change between now and the site walk, we can certainly address it with the applicant.
I'm not so sure even. We had a big discussion at a town meeting many years ago, and I don't think back lots are legal unless they do have a road, then they're not bifurts anymore, but I don't, I don't think you can have back lots anymore, DDo back lots.
Right, that's what they want, so you want to convey it to the neighbor so that it's, it's not a back lot.
Exactly, so you got to build a road to it.
Well, I guess that's kind of...
You have to, Gavin.
On page two...
Unless they convey it.
Page two, item 10-1, it says, "The plan notes that the back land to be conveyed to an abutting property upon approval, but there does not appear to be such an abutment. This transfer should be completed prior to subdivision." Subdivision approval.
Right, that's what Ben was saying.
Yeah, that's what we were discussing.
So, yeah.
So it sounds like there needs to be more conversation with the applicant.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure how, I don't want to hold you guys up and not have you guys schedule the site walk, but I also don't want you to schedule a site walk if they're going to completely come in with a changed application.
I think Jason has to have a conversation with them, Jason and Mike, with the applicants and some of the concerns tonight, like we're talking about, because you definitely need more information. about, because you definitely need more information.
Yeah, I saw something about the back lot, but I'm not sure when this will bring out either. See something about those, looking at the folder this morning. What does that do?
Yeah.
So, procedurally, we should not do a site walk before we've accepted the plan?
I would recommend accepting the plan first and then doing the site walk, because if the plan does change, you know, if you're on, you might have to do a second site walk if all of a sudden the configuration of lots changes.
I'd wait till you guys have the paperwork in hand.
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable accepting it as is.
With the back lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a site plan with this?
It's in your...
There's a map, it shows the back lot, so to speak, it's a fair amount of wetland in it.
When's the next planning update? Is it on July 8th?
No, it would be...
First and third.
Right, but the first one would be canceled.
July 1st is canceled?
Yeah, the first one would be canceled for the month, but then...
Just because of the 4th of July?
Yeah.
So it'd be...
What if we were to use the 7th to have them come in? Is that doable, and then?
It would be, we could have them come in on the 8th. That'd be a Thursday, 7th's a Wednesday, because that's what, right? Wednesdays?
They do one every other week, I don't know, I can't keep up with the schedule.
So they have to be on the Thursday, the 8th?
Yeah, we should, I mean, we should get Joe Stanley in here and...
Instead of doing a site walk on the 8th, have Dragonman on the 8th, have the meeting on the 8th.
I'd recommend, and then you could, then you could do a site walk on the 3rd Thursday.
We'd have to do that.
Two weeks public notice.
Right, what would it?
What's the first Thursday?
The 1st of July, I guess they're scrapping the meeting.
The 1st of July, you're not doing it, the first meeting?
I guess not.
The forum, I don't know.
Oh, personally, yeah.
What do you mean, the forum? There's only gonna be 1, 2, 3, 4.
Yeah, it's 4. It's a five-person board. I'm saying, one way or the other, I'm not gonna be here, but a forum for the planning board is straight.
Fine, I just wanted to lay it to the 3rd Thursday.
You guys wanna go on the meeting on the 1st?
I'm happy to meet on the 1st.
Yeah, I don't mind meeting on the 1st, I can do it.
And then we can say that the site walk on the 8th, assuming the 8th is, you know, the questions.
Right. I'm a fan of the applicant, still, you know?
Right.
Two weeks is a long time, sometimes.
So between now and July 1st, we'll have staff, we'll reach out to the applicant to clarify some things, and we'll plan on having, does that work? Have a meeting on July 1st, okay?
Site walk or a meeting?
Meeting on the 1st and then site walk on the 8th, yeah.
Because you remember on those site walks, you have to have, I think, a 10-day notice. You're supposed to put it in the paper twice, according to our ordinance. I don't know what newspaper you put it in anymore, but you're supposed to post it in the newspaper twice before you do a site walk.
And the address, we can give us 1351 Milton Mills Road.
Good job.
Mary's address, but that's the closest we can give you.
1351?
Yeah, Milton Mills Road, they will put you at Mary, the daycare, so just before that.
It's hard with some of these big tracts of property, you know, sometimes to figure out exactly what's what, where's where. Jason, this is just nothing to do with what's going on tonight, but I'm curious. There's a gravel pit that's opened up down on the Harper, and they've been processing gravel, and hauling gravel out of there.
This is McCoy Paver?
No, down on the Harper Road. It, they opened up, they started, they cut it a little bit ago, and they stripped a whole bunch of it, and they processed a bunch, and they've been hauling it out of there. In order to do that, just so you're a little familiar, before they can start doing that stuff, they're supposed to get a conditional use from the planning board. And just me sitting here at the meetings, I know we've heard nothing, and I was just wondering if that's just an illegal operation?
I don't know.
Yes.
I don't know anything about it right now, and this is the first.
Okay, you're checking into that, though? Because, you know, normally what happens is a gravel pit, say, get permission from the planning board before they start. And they've done a lot of stuff in there, so they're in violation, really, of our ordinance.
We've got three people, 1, 2, 3.
Enough for a forum?
Three fifths, three fifths is enough for a forum.
He's only appointed till the 30th.
That's okay, we have one.
They're gonna reappoint him, July 1st. They said that last night.
Did they?
Yeah. Oh, you didn't get it? No, they appointed him last night, and they're gonna appoint him to replace me full-time.
Maybe. After they've watched tonight, they may realize I can't replace you.
Oh geez.
There is no replacing.
I tell you that.
You'll be here on the 1st?
Yeah, it's gonna be, yeah.
Well, three fifths is a forum. You've got five members.
Trying to go away.
Right, so you'll have the meeting on the 1st, site walk on the 8th. You want to do a, propose a, will they carry him for the 22nd on that, Ben?
Sure.
We'll load up the whole month of July.
Yeah, I mean, that gets public notices easy though, right?
Right.
That's on that Solar Ray thing.
It's a fairly simple, fairly simple derotation.
Once they figure out...
You shouldn't have any...
Yeah.
And then, did you guys get in your packet about...
This is reading, just...
I know, I found that out.
Guys all in for that?
That's okay.
I'll, I'll do it.
I guess that's why, in the back, they gotta kind of get a sense of who wants to do it.
You want to hold their back?
I'm probably not gonna do it.
Fix your name.
Are you in for that?
Yeah, are we members or non-members, or how does that work? Who pays for it?
Allen pays for it.
Yeah, the town.
Gavin would pay for it. Well, we all pay for it, in the long run, paying our taxes, so.
And she'll tell you what, what you need.
Do you need names for who's gonna attend?
They said it was last night, it was mandatory.
The training?
Yeah.
I, I want to do that.
I see this, for the planning board and the...
Four of us?
Drone board.
For four of us, you're out.
Let's see if I can get...
Four of us.
Oh, is there, is there a limit on how many?
No. The biggest want to know how many, you're paid so much.
Yeah, it's expensive.
Yeah, 25 bucks or something.
I thought it said like nine days of 45.
Forty-five, everybody goes, very bottom one.
I want to see if I can get continuing legal ed credit for...
I would, I would ask.
Do we do it visually or are we signing us up?
Chris, you're signing us up, you're being...
Yeah, I'll tell, Ashley, you're, so have all of us down for the, is it training on July 20th?
You can have it.
Except for Gavin.
She's not waiting.
I'll wait for them.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Chris, I'm having a conversation.
Well, that's okay.
Run it over here, well, I'm passing some books.
He's just passing books over, so.
I actually was thinking, I have more, I should have brought...
Well, Dennis, I gotta say, the board is not gonna be the same without you. You just have to come.
Don't bother us, be sure. I agree with Gavin for a few minutes about different things.
What's that?
Having disagreements with Gavin.
You know...
Gavin, he was nice to you.
I met with an old foe of mine, I met with an old foe of mine last night, and when I say by the foe, we've always been on opposite side, and he came to the Sluggins meeting last night, and I was almost in tears, because I really do miss the guy for being around. And we've had 40 years of many discussions. And, but I love the guy dearly, and, and if we ever get back downstairs, you guys will see this room downstairs, it's been dedicated to the great Tom Passion, which gave his life fighting the environment issues that, I was one way and he was the other way, and we had a lot of sparring, but I sure do miss the guy, and it was good to see him last night. Honestly, miss the guy very much. People wouldn't think that, we wouldn't think that much of each other, but I get nothing but the ultimate respect for him, fight for what he believes in, and just like Gavin. And the hope he has when you leave the room, before you leave the room even, shake hands and it's not personal, it's what you believe in. And at the, not this Sluggins meeting, but the Sluggins meeting before, I took quite a brow beating from David Winchell and Ed Walsh, and you guys know, I send all my emails out to everybody. And I, what I was accused of doing, abusing, or attacking, or whatever, was nothing farther from the truth. I've always tried to be respectful and stuff like that when I do that, and I would think that if I was out of line, that one of you guys would have said something to me. I asked one of the Sluggins last night after the meeting, why he did that. He says, "Well, it was your tone in your emails." I says, "How can you judge a tone in an email? You know, I can barely write emails, okay? My great-granddaughters worked very hard to teach me this, okay? With the homeschooling and stuff." And, and that's, you know, some of the reasons why I'm leaving, you know, it just isn't, it isn't worth it to me. And I, I love working with you guys, I, Ashley, I said at the beginning of the evening, I think you're a heck of a addition to the town, and I wish you nothing but the best, and the same thing with Jason. And I like to talk and give people hard times, and, but it's usually in fun, and I wish both of you the best of luck in the future. I really, really do. And I am hopefully, this isn't a campaign speech, but I am willing to hopefully see all you guys at town meeting Saturday, and I am willing to stay on the warrant finance committee, but that's a little different, because when I'm on that, I work for the town meeting and the townspeople, and that's who I'm accountable to, and I like doing that. I like doing this, I'm gonna miss this, I can tell you that much, but it's really been a pleasure to work with all of you, it really has been. Anyway, on that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
No, we just gotta, you know, no new business, the pending project, no action.
Yeah, so in other words, I make a motion to adjourn when I deal with nothing else.
Any second.
Thank you for listening. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dennis.
It's for service.